Hear anybody else. And so it's imperative that we all get up near the mic if we want to talk like I'm doing. I ran into the same thing at the council meeting on Monday night. I couldn't hear half of what they were talking about. Anthony was sitting over there just like I am, and I heard everything he said. So let's try to do a better job there. Go ahead, roll call.
Donna McTice.
Here.
Here. Dory.
Present.
Note that Jamie is absent. Bruce Stewart.
Present.
Aaron is absent.
And we have a quorum, right?
I'm sorry, Brent McCarthy is here.
Present.
And would you like to appoint him as a voting?
Him, yes.
Him is not on.
Okay.
The applicant.
You're voting. Please. All right, so the first item is 67 Welch's Point. Want to update us there?
Yes, so this.
You have a sign up sheet you want filled out or?
I do have a piece of, I'm gonna pass it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Okay, so 67 Welch's. The item was continued from the last board meeting, which was in June, your second meeting in June. And there is no information, new information for tonight for consideration. I mean, I did meet with the applicant. They are working on some changes based on previous discussions. So I would suggest that you continue it until the the meeting of July 23rd.
Twenty third. Oh, I'll entertain a motion to continue this application to the next meeting, which is the 23rd.
Second.
Air motion?
I'll make a motion that.
Greg's making a motion.
I'll make a motion that the case at 67 Welch's Point Road, map 53 on our agenda. It's it's an application for A, be postponed until the next meeting.
Yes, I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is B, 918 Memorial Drive, which we just did the walkthrough. If you want to go ahead and present what you want to present? Or would you rather go right to question and answers? We kind of did that there, right? Are you okay with that? Are you okay with that? Where's his mic? He needs to get your mic.
We are, am I on? We are on Zoom, but I would suggest, even though you've had a little information in the field, if you could ask for that again, so that anyone who's watching via Zoom or the recording would be able to have that information. You can put this here if you want to sit at the podium or.
Did you expect somebody on Zoom?
Yes, fine.
Here.
They are on there. Okay, thank you. Can you hear us all right on Zoom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, following instructions, I'll try to stay near the mic. And so the proposal involves removing 12 trees. And there's a table of them on the top of the site plan. And I went through and circled them on my copy of the site plan and read while we were out there by tree numbers. And so essentially, you'll see that they include a hazard tree that was right against the wall of the cottage, the south wall of the cottage. And then various trees that are needed to get down from Memorial Drive to the construction area. And as you saw, when we were out there, they've essentially already been taken out. They were approved to be taken out by Mark Arsenault. And there is one that's on the list that's still standing, about a four inch hemlock, I believe it was. And so that's the tree cutting. And then the proposal, the current addition set of additions onto the back of the cottage is begins at the back wall of the cottage at the end of the deck. Goes out over, takes a step in and then goes down to its south end and then steps back to the wall of the cottage. And so that that area that is currently in additions and the area of the cutout that's not occupied by additions is essentially the the perimeter of the of the work area. It's all behind the back wall of the cottage. And what they're proposing to do is use the square footage on the portion of the deck to the north of the existing additions up to the extension of the north wall of the the main cottage. They're going to take that out. There's also there were four paving pads that were there that are designated patio on the plan. And it looked like they were there to support something that has since been removed. The pads are there, but there's nothing on them. And so they're going to work within that area. The existing cottage is on post and pier type foundations. And they're going to use the same type of foundation under the new structure out back. And when they get all done, three feet wide by one foot deep, there's going to be an area of stone. And there's a detail in the plans somewhere is three feet wide by one foot deep. It's going to catch all the roof water that comes from any point on the building rear of the existing peak on the main cottage. So there's going to be a peaked roof coming from the back of the new addition up toward the peak on the main cottage. It's going to be about a foot below the peak on the main cottage. And so that's going to create a couple of valleys here and here. So all of the stormwater hitting the roof behind the peak is going to go into this crushed stone area. And essentially serves two purposes. One is to take the energy out of the falling water when it comes onto the stone. And then the other is it has a capacity to hold a certain amount of water and allow it to slowly infiltrate into the ground instead of just running off on the surface of the ground. And so they're taking away this existing deck area. And they want to use that impervious or structure square footage also to compensate for filling in the corner on the existing additions out back. And Elliot's calculations tell me that that's a reduction of six square feet from existing to proposed. And there's going to be downhill on each side of the cottage during construction. There's going to be erosion control berms. So they're going to use erosion control mix. And what we're currently recommending to contractors now is that they install a silt fence with the flap going uphill. And then lay in the erosion control mix again against the back of the silt fence. So it's a pretty good system. Silt fence on irregular ground in Maine doesn't work very well. But that combination works really well. Gets it right down, sealed on the ground. And you've got the erosion control mix down low. And if for some reason the water peaks over the top of the berm, then you've got the silt fence right there to to catch it. And so that's essentially the proposal of what these folks would like to to change and do. And I'm available for questions.
Okay, start over here with Brent.
Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for your time today at the site as well. You just mentioned the cell fence and I just, I can't, I don't see that there's a design spec for that here. Is that something you're going to require on this project?
Okay.
Maybe it's here. Yeah, I didn't see it.
You've got a detail.
Yep.
For the erosion control berm.
Yes.
And like I'm saying, we're going to recommend to the contractor that they also, in addition to this, which is what has typically been used up until now. We're going to recommend that they also buttress that with a silt fence downhill with a flap going under the erosion control berm.
Understood. I'm guessing at some point a contractor is going to look at this design, though, if the silt fence spec is not on there, they're not.
It's probably going to be, it's probably going to be changed.
And just out of my own curiosity, is that, is the silt fence typically you're going to trench? Tie the bottom of the silt fence in? So are you just saying you're going to put a flap there and then put the erosion control mix on top of that? Or will you still tie that silt fence in like you typically would?
No, no, we won't. Okay, trying to tie in the bottom flap on a silt fence in Maine.
Yeah, no, I get it. It's a pretty rocky area.
Down on the sandy beaches along the coast, it's feasible, but around here with rocks and roots and all that. So yeah, the silt fence is the fabric mounted onto grade stakes. And the grade stakes are on the downhill side. And so the the filter fabric that's on the uphill side has a flap on the bottom. And so you pound in the grade stakes in the upper part until this is flat on the ground. And then install your erosion control berm.
Gotcha.
And right behind it, covering the flap, and it seals the flap right to the ground.
So that's a permanent installation? That's permanent?
No, that's during construction.
Great, thank you.
Temporary erosion control during construction.
Well, Brent's point was how do you document that so the contract understands that need? You're going to add to the drawing?
We're probably going to revise the plan to do that before we.
I would appreciate that. That's a steep site and you could see something going south there real quick. I think as we discussed on the site as well, I'd like to have a calculation of what the interior square footage is of the structure because you're proposing to expand living space. I know from an impervious standpoint, it sounds like, and I think Greg might have a question on that. But to get an idea of, and I think it's roughly 120 plus or minus square feet for the addition, eight and a half by 15. But I'd like to be able to see that somewhere in the narrative.
Okay, existing and proposed.
Yes, yes.
And you would like to see floor area?
Yes.
Or inside the wall, inside the outside walls?
Footprint of the house.
Outside, outside.
Okay, okay. So that that includes the roof eaves?
No.
On the footprint?
That's for, the roof eaves are for impervious calculations. I'm just looking at if you, I think you've got a floor, I think you've got designs in here, the floor plan.
So essentially you're saying if we cut off all the eaves going around.
Measure the outside of the building.
Yeah. Existing.
Give me the existing square footage of the structure inside and then.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to spend some time after this meeting just to go through the project file, see if there's anything in there, if there was any historical expansion.
You got that.
So whether you do that or if you want to hand doing that, Don, I'm happy. Well. And I think that's all I had for questions.
Okay.
Nice application. It was well put together.
Okay.
Yeah, so I was, normally we would see the silt fence and we wouldn't see the trees cut because that that silt fence and that berm would be put in place before the trees were removed. So because right now you've taken down all the trees, so now the rain is going to take the duff, the soil layer and wash that right into the lake. Because the trees aren't there to break the rain anymore. So it's not ideal to take the trees down. So I'm kind of surprised you said Mark gave you a permit for that. I'm shocked because that usually doesn't happen. I don't believe that can happen before you come here. You can't start on the project before you see us. And taking down that many trees for construction purposes, you know, dead trees, that's different. But construction type purposes, I believe you have to come to us first. And I would have said, yes, the silt fence goes in before you drop the trees. That would have been my requirement. So it would be nice to have that in sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And normally we would also see when you're dropping that many trees, it's required by state law. This is state law, not me. This is replanting plan. So there's requirements, you're going to plant, you know, eight foot trees, 10 feet apart, all that stuff. We'd see some kind of indication of what that's going to be.
Correct. Yeah, what, the way Elliot set that up with Mark is, and they could probably do it now. They were going to go out there and spec, they're specing six foot trees and.
There's a, there's a replanting requirement. It's all in the main shoreline zoning documents that say what that is. Normally that comes to us as, because that's a requirement that we have to approve is that there's a replanting plan.
There is a, there, I'm sorry, excuse me, there is a plan in there that indicates how many trees and what type of tree needs to be replanted. It's in there and the size.
In there on that, I think.
It's just the write up though, right? It's not, it's not the actual plan.
No.
Okay.
It's described with text.
It's just, right, not the actual replanting plan.
But we'd like to see a plan in the next meeting.
Right, ideally we'd see some kind of a rough plan. So and again, is they can, things can change. We may have to adopt it, but just saying that you understand that that replanting has to happen. When there's a plan, you go, okay. Package back and see no trees there in five years. And replanting didn't happen. So that's really all. Yeah, for just a separation to make sure the the difference between the expansion of the building. So, you know, taking out decks, decks and hardscape and the roofs are what's called impervious surface.
Correct.
Right, so that's something that the rain can't penetrate. You measure the entire roof. You measure the entire deck. You measure railings, anything that sticks beyond the deck. That's included because that's not letting the water hit the ground and infiltrate into the ground. That's how you measure impervious surface. So you're taking out the deck, but it has an overhang. It looks like he was using the square footage. So I just double check your numbers. Make sure that he's using the roof overhang when he does the existing impervious. And then he's going to add a new piece. And how big is that roof overhang? I think you've got kind of on your picture what that's going to be. Just making sure that it's apples and apples when you're kind of adding those numbers together to make sure. Then there's the building expansion, which is on the footprint of the building itself, which is exactly the way that the assessor would measure from the outs, the outside wall. And saying what the living space or the building itself is. You're allowed from January 1st, 1989, I looked up the date. From January 1st, 1989, you're allowed up to a 30% expansion. Zero increase in impervious cover. But you can, and what you're showing is hopefully a net zero impervious cover. So you're allowed that. You can expand the building if it's, if it hasn't been expanded on since January 1st, 1989. Up to 30%. So that would be an expansion of the living space, the building, which you're allowed to do. There's no, it's all based on square footage. Sorry, it's all based on footprint. It's not based on how tall it is. Whether you have a second story or not, that doesn't matter. It's just the base footprint. So like Brent said, that would be useful to have that information. So I just wanted to note. That was it. Thank you.
I guess just to add on to that, this this structure is going to be lower than the original. Guessing that original one is already on climb. Yes, it's 20 feet, but then 75 feet. You're not going above the existing, so you can go. Other thing, you talk about the trees being gone. Would like to see the berm stay in place until some of these new trees get going.
It's, yeah, it's in the state statute that they have to be there a year. And when you do the replanting plan, there's also, I think it's a 20% failure. So if the tree dies, if you lose more than 20% of the trees, you have to put the tree, you have to plant new trees until they're stable, which is usually in Maine season.
Yeah.
Just the way it works. So it'd be up, you know, if they did the construction this year, it would be up and through next year.
So probably state that instruction's done. That doesn't mean you take the berm out.
No, no, no. Yeah, the, the, everything needs to be stabilized. The trees need to be restabilized.
Like to see that in there. I don't know that it says that. Other question I had.
An answer to your first question. The height of that building.
Yeah.
Was 25.6 by shoreline zoning definition from the downhill grade to the highest.
Yeah.
Yeah, the average downhill grade to the highest.
Now, the, right now where it's located is 20 feet max. But it's grandfathered, so you're fine as long as you don't make a new one.
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's either that or what you've already got.
Right. Your crushed stone infiltration trench. Oh, is that, I can't, it says 12, it's 12 inches deep.
Correct.
Oh, that's going to go all around the new?
Yes, three feet out.
Not any.
In that, that shaded area that you see on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, there is a, there is a detail for it on the plan.
Yeah, I saw.
This lower one. Three feet deep. All right, one, 12 inches deep and three feet wide.
She's going to have to do a little excavation there. 12 inches deep, three foot wide.
Yeah, and that's.
Where I questioned your.
That's where Elliot came up with his six cubic yards.
Really? That's all he come up with? You have to count what you take out as well as what you put back in. Not going to be. That's all I had.
Brent?
Don, to follow up on on your comment about the roof. So it's 25, six, did you say at the peak now?
Is the, yeah, but the height of the peak of the existing camp by the shoreline zoning definition
Yeah.
is 25, six. The peak on this new addition is essentially going to be 24, six. It's going to come back off the back of the roof a foot below the existing peak. For its peak.
And what is the limitation on height that close to the lake? 20?
Right.
So, so, so the new, the existing structures, but the new structure would not be grandfathered.
Correct.
I understand, but we're, we're allowing an expansion, a new structure to be built that exceeds height limitation.
Olson? Do you have an answer?
Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's going to be less than the existing non-conform, but I don't think we can allow a new a new structure to go in there, that new ridge line that's going to be higher than.
I think in the past, we have allowed them up to the existing.
If the grandfathered non. Doesn't increase the amount of non-conform. It just aligns with it.
And Welch's point is very similar.
Yes.
Say using the 28, six, I think it is off the existing building that's near the water way back. Yeah, they're not within eight feet, but I think that.
Yeah, it's, it's another one of those ones that it's either what they've specked in the ordinance or what you've already got, whichever is greater.
I think that's correct.
Thank you, Olson.
Yes, sir.
On the schedule and on the drawing, there's one tree that was cut behind the garage that I don't see on the schedule. And it's a significant tree. I mean, that's.
It was right against the back wall of the garage.
Yep.
So it was probably, I'm just speculating here, it was probably deemed to be a hazard tree.
Was it on the permit?
That, that tree was a hazard tree. Mark had been out to our property and had specified that that actually, and the one next to it might also be considered taking down. But we, we didn't want two, two of those trees taken down. So we just took the one that he suggested to be the more dangerous of the two. So that's, I think.
So Mark permitted that tree being cut down?
Yeah, yeah, he's, he had been out several times to our place. And I just want to speak to the the trees being taken down today. We were, we clearly understand the importance of going through the town for permission to do everything. The person who we had been working with to secure the trees being taken down and also the work that's going to be done on the camp. He knows Mark and had been in contact with him. And my understanding was that he and Mark were in agreement with what trees were allowed to be taken down under that permit that Mark issued us in regard to the camp and the construction. So in no way did we purposefully try to circumvent you guys. And I apologize if that is how it came across. That, that's not it at all. So I just wanted to clarify that. We, we, we clearly are very concerned about going about this the right way. We've been working at this almost two years. And it's, it's important for us to do it the right way. So I just wanted to address that.
With that said, it's about the fact the trees are now down and there's no erosion control. So something needs to be done pretty quick.
Yeah.
It's a steep slope and it's going to erode. And so we need to do something right off.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sir. Yeah, we can have our guy get out there and put the the two types of erosion control that Andrew's talking about and have him get that that out. No, no problem.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Is that berm on the drawing?
Yes.
It is.
How far does it go? Does it go over past that area where those trees were out or just behind the construction area?
Don, they're crooked line off each side of the building. One's on the deck end and one's on the left hand end on the plot plan.
That's it?
It's kind of a crooked.
Yeah. Black line labeled.
Yeah, does that cover, I'm just asking, does that cover the area where the trees? Yeah, does that cover, I'm just asking, does that cover the area where the trees?
Yes.
Were removed, or do you have to extend that out a little farther?
Uh, that would, that would cover the area.
The area where those trees, okay, that, that's, that was my question.
I'm looking at the block plan on the left and the trees are all behind that. And it looks like the ones on the right are all. And that big one behind the garage is right on the tip of it. And there is a retainer wall in there that I'm not sure how that slopes rather than guiding the water coming down that hill to that berm. I don't know. But, but we've been assured that they'll take care of it right off. I appreciate that. Okay, Don, I think up to you now.
Just wanted to keep back what I've heard, make sure that we're so, um, we'd like to have silt fence detail.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Uh, we'd like to have this silt fence detail shown on the plan set in the plan.
We just determined, I think that we've got that, right?
Add silt fence to the berm.
This is the additional silt fence with the erosion control, which is not on the plan, right?
Yeah, that was the original, that was one of them there, um, the calculation, the interior calculation of square feet. Um, I have eight and a half by fifteen, is that what, what reference, sorry?
Yeah, I think it's eight, eight-two by fifteen-three, so I'd like existing square footage and proposed square footage.
Existing and proposed square foot of the footprint and the interior, were those two different?
Nope, same thing.
Okay. Um.
Exterior wall.
It's the exterior wall.
Just same way the tax assessor does it, which is exterior, exterior.
Okay, and then the historical file, I'll do a summary of that, that.
Okay.
Um, I'm noting that, but that's not for the applicant, I'll take care of that. You, uh, let's see. Um, it was noted that the trees should not have been removed and that the fence, silt fence should be, be in place prior for tree removal. But, um, the applicant has indicated that they are going to, um, put erosion control in place. It's been indicated it's imperative that that will be done.
It'll be expedited.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, let's see, the replanting plan, there's a narrative, but there should be an actual plan um, that matches the narrative and that meets chapter one thousand. Um, double check the impervious calculations and how the roof overhang is incorporated. Those were Greg's comments that I get that, okay. Um, it's noted that the structure will be lower than the existing, uh, peak height, which is currently non-conforming at twenty-five feet, six inches. So that'll be clear in the finding and then the proposed addition is gonna be twenty-four feet, six. The language in the ordinance says that for structures located less than seventy-five feet from the normal high water line of a water body, tributary, stream or upland edge of a wetland, the maximum of height at any structure may not be greater than twenty feet or the height of the existing structure, whichever is greater. So there was just some discussion to see. Seems good. Done in the past. The erosion control berm should stay in place per chapter one thousand until the revegetation is stabilized. We can add these as, as conditions, add them as notes on the plan. It was noted that the crushed rock infiltration um, will need earth moving. I don't know if that's actually something that needs to be documented. Uh, but that was just an observation. Those, and those were the pieces that I had that were called out for clarification or addition. For an updated.
Anything we missed? Are you all set, Don?
I am.
Uh, who's online? Is it Susan or Robin or both?
Both, both of us.
Um, do you have any input other than what you've told us already?
Um, no, I mean, I think that our intent really behind all of this is just to try to reduce the amount of erosion that has been occurring underneath the camp at the back of the camp where I'm sure you guys saw that it was like rotted. So we just want to, um, you know, try to excavate, I guess for lack of a better word, just dig that out so we can sure it up and then create that, um, that infiltration system, if you will, to, to kind of slow the erosion from the street down as well as off of the, the roof. Um, cause the way the roof is now, clearly it's just dropping right, right at the back of the camp there. So that's just really our intention with all this. We just wanna try to, you know, do what's right for the lake and, 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 and have a property that's kind of, you know, it's safe and, and will last a little bit longer than if we just, you know, shoved a joist under there. So we, we really appreciate, you know, everything that everybody's trying to do to, to get this underway. So, um, we'll, we'll do, I, I already emailed our contractor, texted them and said, listen, we gotta get this berm underway. So Andrew, if you could just make sure that I get, um, some kind of, can you hear me, Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, that I get some kind of, sorry buddy, that I get some kind of a email or a text so I know exactly what to tell our contractor, so he's aware of both of that, not just the silt fence, but that other thing you were talking about.
Okay, yep, the, the berm is on the plan. Um, but we could add the, the silt fence.
Yeah, okay.
Amendment, amendment to it.
Okay, yep, that's it, guys.
All set?
Appreciate your time.
Now, just a technical question, uh, you've been online, listening to us. We're trying to do better in terms of, of, uh, on, online and in the audience for that matter, so we hear, you can hear us better. How, how'd it work out for you?
It's pretty good, ninety-five percent success, I think. There were a couple drops, but other than that, it was great.
That's a huge improvement. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh, go ahead, Brent.
Mr. Chairman, do they need to consult with Mark before they go ahead and bring the erosion control berm and get silt fences in place? I don't know if Mark has any type of a notification or permit he requires or anything along those lines.
I guess the question I think you're asking is, they don't have a permit yet. They do have the permit for cutting trees, that's the question you're asking. Do they have permission to put the berm in that we're pushing?
Thank you for restating that.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Don, can you take that?
So it's suggested the condition of approval for plenty more will be that they have to contact Mark after the erosion control measures in place before they start any.
Talking about tomorrow, though.
He's talking about tomorrow and, and the erosion control measures, I mean.
Yeah.
We haven't approved anything yet, so, yep, we want that done.
So are we, we want Mark to go out there and, and inspect them once they're installed, is what I'm.
No, we, we want Mark to, okay.
Yes.
Doing, doing that preventative work to keep the erosion control where it needs to be, so.
I don't believe there's a permit required for installing a silt fence.
All right, so we're covered then, that answers your question.
And the erosion control mix is not considered, Phil?
No, it's not, because it's specifically designed, it's root, it's root, ground up roots that is specifically designed to sink in lakes, doesn't float. That's why it's used, that's why you have to use it.
I would still strongly suggest the applicant reach out to Mark and.
I would, I would definitely.
Just to be above, just to be above board.
Coordinate with him and make.
Yes, we need Mark involved.
Yeah.
Hey, okay.
Just to make sure that he, you know, he, they're, they've already specked out where they're putting it, just making sure that Mark's good with them installing it.
Susan, Robin, do you understand the discussion we're having?
Yeah, uh, is it okay if I have our contractor talk with Mark about it, or is that?
No, we insist you have them talk to Mark about it.
Okay, done.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue this application to the next meeting, which is the twenty-third. I'm sorry.
For clarity, though, so the applicant's contractor is gonna reach out to the code enforcement officer and they're gonna coordinate and communicate regarding the installation of those erosion control measures immediately.
Correct, and I expect the engineer will be involved too, because there's a piece that's not on the drawing, that's the silt fence with the erosion control, which is gonna add to this whole concern. And it sounds like everybody's on the same page, we just gotta do it right, that's all. And so, um, whoever your representative is, and Mike and, and the contractor need to be talking to each other. Mike's very good on erosion control, so.
Good.
Do I hear a motion? To continue to the next meeting?
I've got one question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Before you shut this down, what stage are we at with public notice?
Where are we currently at? The status, what you're asking?
Yeah.
Tell us.
So the budgets have to be notified within five hundred feet of mail, so that will be done the twenty-fifth meeting, which is.
Twenty-third, right?
Yes.
Fourteen days is twenty.
So the twenty-third, so we noticed for that, um, so once you take that public input, then you can make it.
Okay, but that can happen, right? And that's the question you're asking. If possible, we'd like to look at this next meeting and if everything's in a row, then we have the ability to, one, accept it as complete and two, if we want to approve it, right? So if we get those ducks in a row, so that's a critical piece.
That can be done if you continue it to the twenty-third. Um, that notification will be done and if you have the information that you requested and now the issues are resolved pending public decision.
I think this pre-meeting and the walkthrough is a big help, I, my opinion.
Definitely.
Do I have a motion? Did I answer your question? Did we answer your question?
Um, one remaining, so the municipality is gonna perform the notice. Good.
So, yes.
Unhelpful.
Can't hear her head nodding, but that's a yes.
I'm done.
Thank you.
I will, uh, put out a motion that the case for nine eighteen Memorial Drive, map forty-seven, lot twenty-two, uh, be postponed until our next meeting of July twenty-third.
Very second.
I'll second them.
Don seconds. All in favor, should be, any other discussion? All in favor? A vote? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to C, seventy-seven Turtle Run Road. Is there anybody else online for that?
Joe?
Joe?
Just Joe, no last name, and I don't know if they're here for any particular application. But they're muted, so this, the other item is the board had continued it to this meeting pending, um, legal input regarding the status of the use, the existing and proposed use of the lodging and marina for the condominium conversion. And the attorneys have communicated, um, and I hope to be having a phone meeting with the town attorney tomorrow or Monday. So if you, my recommendation is to continue this until the twenty-third as well, uh, hopefully that we would have that legal interpretation. A public hearing will be noticed for the August thirteenth meeting and at that point, hopefully you're gonna have whatever information you need. You could make a decision on the thirteenth. You know, at that point, it depends on if you have everything that you need.
Well, I understand we're not covering this the next meeting, it's a meeting afterwards.
Well, you may be able to discuss the legal question at the.
Okay, at that meeting, okay.
Wouldn't be able to make an, uh, a decision until after.
Be a public hearing the next meeting and, the first meeting in August. Okay, I understand that.
Twenty-fifth, so you can have that discussion around the legal legality of the use.
Exactly what are the attorneys going to discuss?
Uh, the existing use and the proposed use. Because there's a different difference of opinion of what that is.
As far as whether it's partial or.
Sedental.
What, what about the, uh, what's happening with getting the marina office building out of the condominium?
Nothing at this point.
With the land.
First threshold is determining that existing proposed use and then, and then we'll look at it from there.
That could hold us up again.
I'll make sure to address that when I talk.
I believe, uh, one of the people here, steward, I believe, said that wouldn't be a problem, taking that. Just like to know if, gonna do it and that include the land around it. I think that's where we had a problem. You've got a marina in the middle of a condominium with gas docks, underground tanks and a launching ramp. This doesn't seem to fit condominiums.
So I'll make sure to get some clarity about that, we'll talk to our attorney and what, however that's coordinated and those discussions go, I'll make sure that's part of it.
Yeah, okay.
And then hopefully that will be part of the information provided to you for the twenty-third.
Yeah, that'd be good, cause that, that could hold us up if we don't have that information.
Is there anything else that anyone felt was unanswered from a legal perspective?
I have, uh, did you get communications from Bill Montego?
I did. I did, do you want me to address that?
Yeah.
So Bill, um, I actually met, uh, talked with Phil today, we're gonna meet on Monday, um, afternoon down at his offices to go over any number of things. One of them is this application. So there was a misunderstanding, he thought that that was a parking lot being reviewed this evening. Because there was a submittal of a parking plan that showed a property boundary that hadn't been there before. And I attached that to the agenda, so he thought you were reviewing that this evening, so he submitted some comment to that. Um, but I talked to him to explain that, 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 that wasn't the case. So we're gonna meet on Monday and talk about comments pertaining to that and some other, um, applications that are going.
So you saw the, the attachments?
Did.
You got all that, did anybody else get it? Okay. Well, it's, to appropriate point, we need to share that with the board.
So it was only sent to us then?
Correct, must have been just you and I.
Yep, I will incorporate that.
Don't mind sharing, I just got one copy, so. And, um, he's talking about prosperous, he's talking about the parking lot. Uh, he had a lot of aerial photos that would, over time, that showed, uh, the parking area. So you're having that discussion with him about that, and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Correct.
And I had one last thing, if you're gonna talk to lawyers anyways. Um, it was brought up in the last meeting that there, there's no ordinance for condominiums in Winthrop, but there's a state ordinance. I searched the state website, got lost a little bit as far as where the guidance is. And you get a very clear picture of exactly which guidance we have to follow. There wasn't like a nice magic, here's Maine condominium law. It wasn't, it seemed to be kind of scattered in different places. And I'm not sure if I was looking in the right place, but if there is some single source, it would be nice to know where that is.
I can get.
If it's, yeah, if it's not, if it is really that complicated, that's fine, I just.
And between the two lawyers, they ought to be able to tell you that.
Well, that's what I'm assuming, they probably would know where the laws would actually rest.
And so the, but the board is looking at, um, the subdivision ordinance, local purview, but I will most certainly get that information.
Right.
See what the big picture.
Well, I'm just saying it was brought up in the last meeting that we were supposed to be, you know, following the state law for condominiums and it would be nice to know what that is, cause we don't have any specific laws here in town or ordinances or guidance.
Get that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have to make a motion to table.
We do, I'm sorry.
Right.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, uh, seventy, the case for seventy-seven Turtle Run Road, map fifty-four, lot forty, uh, be tabled, uh, the legal discussion be tabled until the twenty-third and then the hearing would be the following meeting.
Second.
I have a motion or second. All in favor? Can I do other now?
Ken, I got one.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so this, it bugged me last time when it came up about impervious cover versus vegetated cover. So I looked and the main state shoreline zone says vegetated cover, twenty percent, period. We say impervious cover, which is not the same thing in our ordinance. And I'm sure it used to say impervious cover, but at some point it switched to vegetated cover. So, and it still says the same thing, so you're grandfathered, whatever percentage you're at, those sort of things. So this is again, within the, it's, it's a, there's a limit, there's a forty percent limit on the two hundred and fifty-foot boundary. And it's a, uh, twenty percent limit at the hundred-foot boundary. So you can't have anything impervious, the limit is twenty percent. So if somebody wanted to put a patio or something inside that, but I don't think we allow that at all. Because anything that's a structure is not allowed, but it says vegetated, so that means you can't have non-vegetated area. And a total of twenty percent. And we were, well, we were having the discussion about, you know, three-quarter inch stone and like, and, and even this new one, that rain strip, you know, that, that provides a good runoff, you know, that, that provides a lot of good things. That's not really, I wouldn't classify that as impervious area. But it is non-vegetated. So do we have to look at that? I, I'm just throwing it out that our ordinance is not in alignment with the state ordnance, with the state guidelines. And it could be that our ordinance is older and the state guidelines changed.
One of our, one of our priorities is, and it was set for June and now in July, but Don and I talked about it today, that we need to get back on track with revising the ordinance. but Don and I talked about it today, that we need to get back on track with revising the ordinance where we need to, and that's one that we need to add right there.
Okay.
Don, if you can capture that one, uh, as a thing to look at when we get into the ordinance again and if we need to correct that, we need to correct it so it's consistent.
So Greg, you said, I thought I heard you say impervious equates to vegetated.
No, no, we say impervious.
Right.
The state law says vegetated. And I'm saying, I think it says non-vegetated.
Non-vegetated.
Non-vegetated, sorry, non-vegetated. But, but I think that at some point that terminology changed. It probably said impervious in the original state statute. And at some point they changed it to non-vegetated. And I think we're just not in alignment with that is all I was saying, so.
So one thing we need to fix along with that two-fifty, Colton brought to our attention. There's other, other items in there.
There, there's, there's a number of items to discuss. I just thought that one was interesting because it came up at our last, it came up at our last, it's not, it actually, yeah, and, and, and we kind of have to follow the state, so.
Is that very different one from the other?
They can be, I mean, so, you know, what's classified as vegetated, I would think would be vegetated, meaning grass, trees, things grow, right? Impervious is something that the rain cannot penetrate, there's actually a definition for it. So anytime you put something up, so if you had, um, like three-quarter inch stone, if you had, uh, you know, large rocks, things like that, that may not be impervious. I mean, that, that's, the rain actually hits and then goes through the rocks and makes it into the ground, right? It doesn't make a sheet flow, it, it's not like you put a stainless steel or a roof where all that water's going to run off. That's why impervious is called impervious, because the water can't reach the ground underneath. In the case of like a three-quarter inch stone bank, water can reach the ground underneath. So it would be hard to classify that as impervious, but it's definitely non-vegetated. So, so that's where, exactly, that's where we have to be careful. If we were saying, somebody said, oh, I'm going to add this new three-quarter inch stone driveway and it's not going to increase my impervious area, I'd say you're right. But it is going to increase your non-vegetated, which is what the state statute says. So we probably have to think about changing that terminology in our ordinance. Yeah.
I just want to point out, Greg, because I don't know if I'm on the same page as you, but so our table three has the bulk and space requirements and it's too impervious. But we do have, um, in the shoreline provision, um, non-vegetated service surfaces shall not exceed twenty percent of the lot located in the shoreline zone. So I believe we have both of them.
Okay, okay.
Which is where it got a little confusing at the.
Maybe it just wasn't in the table that way, so, okay.
We need to fix that.
So we might have just pulled the text out of the state statute and put it in the narrative, but we didn't update the table.
I believe that's what happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the same issue, we have the two-hundred-and-fifty feet, Colton brought to our attention. It's okay on one page, but it's not on the other page, the next page.
Correct.
We, we would still have to determine though, if you put stone down with nothing under it, we're going to call that non-vegetated.
It's, it's, it's non-vegetated, period. It really would be, there's no way around that.
But fabric under it that's not porous, then it's going to be impervious.
Yeah, but if you, but if you do make it, I mean, it could be impervious and not be non-vegetated. So they're not, they're not going to be completely interchangeable, like a roof is going to be both, is non-vegetated and impervious. So you're going to have a number of things that'll fall into that category. So it's not going to be an exact one-to-one match. And it's probably, you're going to need some kind of a stone, some type of a very, very porous, open type material. So it's going to be some kind of stone cover.
So where they're putting the stone trenches around this new addition?
That would be an addition and.
What would that be?
It would be an expanded non-vegetated area, right now that would be classified as vegetated. So based on the rules, can we even allow that?
Yeah.
And this entire lot's within a hundred feet, so we can't, that would be an increase in the non-vegetated.
Yet, it's permia, permia.
Again, it's not impervious, but I, I, our ordinance is, really seems like it was focused on impervious. That's why I was thinking we wouldn't be able to change it until we updated our ordinance. Because it's definitely misleading and, because it says impervious in a lot of places.
The other business?
To have both in there.
No.
It's outside of the shoreline zone. Do you, do you not want a maximum impervious surface?
Well, there's a maximum in every zone, you know, you don't want to take an entire lot and pave it.
You want, in your table, trying to figure what.
But there's no state, once you're outside a shoreline zone though, there's no statute. So we'd have to, we might have to leave impervious cover for non-shoreland zone. Because that, those are fifty percent in the commercial district, there, there's numbers in the table. So we might have to.
Do you want me to update the table and provide a, what that would look like?
Yeah, we might have to, I, I, well, again, as we start talking about it, we may want to think about it. I really didn't dive into it, it's great question and discussion. I just wanted to bring it up because I was, I actually looked it up and said, it actually does say twenty percent non-vegetated. So.
Excuse me, other business? Don? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
There we go.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have all the stuff. Bill?